I need to call the order and verify that everybody received the meeting notice and adoption of the agenda.
Okay.
I'll get up.
Well, let's do the pledge of the flag.
So, let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're starting with our committee of the whole meeting, and at this point in time, we do entertain comments from the audience. We do have stated on our agenda that persons addressing the board are asked to state their name and address for the record, and if you could please limit your comments to one time and to five minutes, that would kind of help us move our meeting along. So, are there some comments from the audience at this point?
Good evening. My name is Bob Schmargoski, address is 6425 South 16th Street, Franklin, Wisconsin. I'm going to ask for an acceptance of the date regarding the time limit, because I'm going to hand out to the board members a letter from Mayor Franklin, and I want to read that letter into the record, so I don't want that used for my two to five minutes, please.
It's nice to meet you, Chris.
My pleasure. Go up with the knee. I went through five of those. I know what it's like.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi, Bob.
How you doing?
Okay, TJ says he's on the expressway, almost here. Thank you.
I had a call from Bernie that said three minutes, he was getting off on I-43.
Three minutes? Oh, now I got a message from TJ, "Start without me, traffic is horrific."
Okay, I had a discussion with Mayor Taylor from Senior Franklin, and he's heard about it beforehand, and he said that, "Bob, could you do me a favor?" He said, "If we have a committee of the whole meeting on the 16th, he said if I send you a letter, could you present it to the Whitman School Board?" I said, "Mayor Taylor, really for years, yes, it would be a pleasure." He dated this December 14th, since aggressive Whitman School District got this address as attention, Mr. Bernard Shaw, Whitman School Board President and Board Members, regarding Dr. Lowell Holt's contract extension. Dear Mr. Shaw, it has come to my attention that your school board will be discussing a contract extension for your superintendent, Dr. Lowell Holtz. Over the years, as a first and alderman, then as mayor for Franklin, for the past nine years, I have watched as the Whitman School District, should be became, a shining example of excellence in public education. Based on discussions I have with my constituents in Whitman School District, it is my understanding that much of the recent success of the outstanding educational achievements in the Whitman School District are directly related to the fine work of Dr. Lowell Holtz. It is further my understanding that Dr. Holtz's goal has been to provide the best education for the children, so their future aspirations in life may be achieved. Therefore, I strongly encourage you, the members of the Whitman School Board, to vote for the extension of Dr. Lowell Holtz's contract, based on his outstanding past performance and the current record of educational excellence that the Whitman School District has been known to have realized. I might add that you, the members of this school district, should also be very proud of the accomplishments that you and Dr. Lowell, should be Holtz, have accomplished together, and I wish you much continued success and happy holidays. Sincerely, Mr. Thomas M. Taylor, Mayor Senior Franklin. Now, onto my brief three to five minutes. Being a former school board member for a couple of years, and then for 10 years being involved in Whitman School District issues, mainly from the predecessor, Dr. Karen Patrick. I can tell you this honestly, I take a look at all the controversies involving this district over those years, and it was constant, all right? Got to a point where I would be taking phone calls from parents or staff each week at a minimum of six times, all right? Then I sat and I look at what has happened in the district in those 10 years. What went downhill wasn't the board, it was the relationship between Dr. Patrick and the community, which includes the district. I liked that, how test scores were going, the ranking in the state, the atmosphere between Dr. Patrick and the staff, which included the teachers, the parents. It was through morale problems throughout. You look at, what did they have? They had petitions from the teachers at each school, asking, you know, possibly that she be removed from her position. Now, what came about, since the retention of Dr. Holtz, was a blessing for this district. Matter of fact, to the point where I've even told people, even the secretary today, I said, "You know, my first meeting with Dr. Holtz was like about eight or nine months after he came on board. I said, 'I had two complaints,' and he said, 'What is that?' And I said, 'Well, I understand you're here at 6:30, quarter to 7:00 every morning.'" He said, 'Yes,' he says, 'sometimes earlier.' And I said, 'Well, your predecessor, when she was here, she was lucky if she was here at 10:30, 11 o'clock in the morning, was gone by 1:00 on the day she was here.' And I said, 'My second complaint,' I brought up about receiving the phone calls from parents and staff complaining about his predecessor, and I said, 'Now, here's my big complaint, Dr. Holtz. Since you've been on board, I haven't gotten any phone calls. I feel left out.' Recently, and I've been keeping track, I keep track with parents and teachers who I've known for years throughout this district, and we talk, and I can tell you this, I saw a drastic turnaround in the years since Dr. Holtz has been here. And yes, he didn't do it alone, it was with the cooperation of the school board. I look at the test scores, where we've gone, we beat out Nicolay, we beat out Greendale, and a number of other districts. Then I look at the state ranking. When his predecessor was here, our rankings, they plummeted down. Since he's been here, with the help of the school board, they've drastically gone up. Then I look at the morale with the teachers and the other staff. What has it been? Terrific. I mean, give you an example, his rapport with the staff, including teachers, custodians. The Act 10 issue, the teachers were out here on the sidewalk in front of the high school picking, every right to. What did Dr. Holtz do? Because it was rainy, damp outside, he came out with his famous little baseball cap, and he went up to the teacher and says, "I honor what you're doing, I respect it, you have that right." But, my God, it's cold out here. How about if I go get coffee and hot chocolate and cookies for you? That was the olive branch that he gave to the teachers, that was a sign, yes, this is the type of cooperation I want with the people in this community, the teachers included, and custodians on down the road. So, I guess you have a hard decision to make tonight, but I can tell you this, if the contract extension is not given, knowing how superintendent contracts work, come May, he will be approached by other school districts, like he has been within the past six to nine months. Greenfield number one, they wanted him so badly, because I know a couple of board members, and also Mayor Nitske. They would have loved to have him in their district, to help them improve it the way they did in Whitman. So, I'm asking you, as a former school board member, and a parent of a former Whitman school student, and a taxpayer of this district, seriously look at extending this contract. Don't let somebody else come in and destroy what he has achieved and more has achieved over the past how many years? So, I'm asking you to support him unanimously. This is what the school district and this community needs, the parents, the children, everybody. You know, I never, I don't, I think when I saw that, the first time, I haven't been here for meetings, but take a look at that on that wall. That's Dr. Lowell Holtz. Thank you.
Write the comments.
Okay. Just why I apologize. The trip wasn't as bad as the one from Green Bay last week, but almost as bad, I'll tell you that, from downtown, I don't know what happened, so I make my apologies and I thank Eileen for filling in. As she mentioned, we're from comments from the audience, I think you set kind of the ground rules already, is what they are, so anybody else want to come up to the microphone? Please make sure you state your name and your address, and we'll go from there. Anyone?
Something a little different for you. My name is Bob Johnston, 11744 West Leighton Avenue. About five, six months ago, I didn't find you, and I asked you to think about the staffing report to add up the behavior intervention specialist, and you did. I'm going to give.
How nice, how nice, thank you. I don't think you guys ever fed us. Go for it.
I'll hold it.
You want me to take it? All right, I will. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
There's enough here for everybody, so grab a couple of them if you want.
Thank you.
But...
Thank you, sir.
Thanks to your approval, the district now has a BCBA, which is a pretty significant designation. Board Certified Behavior Analyst. Your title is Behavior Intervention Specialist.
I don't have a title, thank you.
Sure? Going to die? It's good stuff, Quinn.
I understand. Quinn, it's better than when he says, "Should you be," to me.
Thank you.
There's, you know, as with any new position, there's obviously challenges that have to be dealt with, and I'm sure that in the future, we'll be coming back with another hat in our hand, hoping for more donations, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Please step up to the microphone, if you would. Name and address.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Cagle, 5978 South Curtis. I'm actually here with my son, who is a middle school student. I have two students over at Hills Corners Elementary, and he's here for Boy Scouts. We came here last month, he really enjoyed it, we came back, it's part of a merit badge, but I'm originally from Chicago, and moved up here, and chose Hills Corners because of the Whitman School District. And I went through private schools, all going through, even through Marquette, because of the quality of education. I'll be quite honest, he's in eighth grade, he's getting ready for high school, and I've looked at all the different schools possible. He's scored in the top 99th percentile of the state for WKC testing consistently, and so he can get into just about any school. His aspirations for college are Harvard, Caltech, the top-notch schools, and he has a chance to go there, and if it wasn't for this school district, I don't think that would be possible. He's in band, a month and a half ago, they went down to Chicago for a weekend trip, and they went to the Chicago Symphony Orchestra with John Williams, they went to Blue Man Group, they went to the Shut Aquarium, they went to Museum of Science and Industry. Not many other schools have a band program left, let alone one that offers that opportunity. He's excited about going to DC in the spring. It's a great opportunity for him, and it wasn't even a difficult decision to say, "I want him to go to Whitman for high school," because you can look at a million different other options private-wise. They don't offer what we have here, and it's the teachers care about the students, they're there because they care about them, they want what's best for them, and that starts with the top. You can see that the rankings are getting better, you hear people say, "Oh, my kid's going to go to Greenfield, my kid's going to go to Greendale," and now I can say, "Well, my son does go to Whitman," and I'm proud of that, and I think that starts with Dr. Holtz. And if we lose that, I fear that a lot of students will leave to go to private options instead of staying here. And it's a place where people want to go, people want to come to the school district, they do open enrollment, they move into the district, they want to come here, and to change that, I think, would be a huge loss for the school district, the town, and everybody involved, so that was it. I don't know, I'm really happy for them, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. Anyone else? Okay, if not, we'll move on to 4A, the reports, first reading of Policy 181. Who has this? Rules of Order?
That might be the policy committee?
Policy committee?
The word that we did, I'll take it for Quinn.
Okay.
Because he's had a rough time. It really was just rewording, rewording our current policy in a way that was a little bit more reflective, Roberts, while we use Roberts' Rules of Order, it's intended to be for larger bodies than this small group. So, it simply states that even if we don't strictly follow it, the business that we do stands. So, we just clarified that in the policy, Mary.
Has any of this been reviewed by our legal counsel? Have you gone to Dan or anybody?
The legal counsel hadn't looked at it, but the wording that you'll see here came directly, it was word for word, verbatim, from the WSB recommendation.
Okay.
We would recommend its approval.
At the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good. All right, next item is 4B, first reading of Policy 425, public school enrollment, open enrollment. Luanne, are you going to take this also?
Well, this one didn't go through the policy committee, but we, I would be glad to take this. This is really recommended by, I think it was our attorney, legal counsel involved in this one, correct?
Yeah, we had sent Joel and Kathy to open enrollment workshop, and their legal counsel there had some great recommendations to protect the district, and so I gave Joel and Kathy, actually, to go ahead and put it in front of the board.
And it all looks good with me, so.
Again, supported by WSB, assuming this.
Right.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments in either 181 or 425 from the board? Okay, if not, I'll see Eric here, Tech Ed update.
That'll be Joel. Eric offers his apologies, he's sick, and at the end of the day, he said, "Can I please go home?" And I said, "Sure, Chris is here to take care of things," so.
Thank you.
But, Tech Ed, Joel, you want to just tell them real quick what's...
Mark may not be here because of the miscommunication with me, I've talked to him about coming to the next board meeting, which if he saw next week, he may have pulled up for next week. But what he was going to show us was some of the cabinetry that his kids have built, they've built custom cabinetry around a couple of people here, they've built cabinetry for district office, they're working on architectural plans where the kids will come up with a concept, design a plan, and then put it together. So, they'll learn the drafting side, they'll learn the application side, as well as the finer pieces of the cabinery and machine tools. He's been working with them on building holiday projects, improving their skills, improving their focus on what they're doing in the class, as opposed to just being there. And let's see what else. I'm sure he was really excited about coming out here, so now I got to go see him tomorrow and say, "Maybe I messed up on the dates." But, I've been down in that class quite a bit because of the co-op side of this. I go down there, I see the shop is in real good order, and as a school shop teacher, I know that a perfectly clean shop is a clean, active one, so I don't want to say that it was perfectly clean, but it was in order. I knew where everything was. The kids were focused, the kids were working on projects, you can see the quality of the project is above what I've seen in most very excellent shops. He's a craftsman, and he's imparting his knowledge and skill to the kids, so I'm excited for getting the date right, and having him come out and show you some of what he's done and talk a little bit more into the program. I'm impressed, I'm excited, and I can tell you that from what I've seen with the kids and heard talking in the classroom, I expect to see him all in school, and that's a big thing for our district. Thank you.
Thanks, Joel. Any questions or comments for Joel?
It will be nice at some point to actually meet him face-to-face and see some of the products, as well as maybe from middle school, the new middle school tech director, and get a little update from them.
Yes, I'd love to, and I'm going to remedy that, but from what I understand, what I've seen, it's been very lucky. So, we've done well with both of those hires, and we're looking toward a consistent program of work.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, if not, item 5A, discuss and take action on administrator contract extension.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move, do we extend the contract, the 2013-2015 employment agreement for Dr. Holtz through the 2015-2016 school year, ending on June 30th, 2016?
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a motion, we have a second? Is there any discussion? If not...
Yeah, I will discuss it.
Okay.
First, I want to make record that I'm under doctor's care and under doctor-prescribed narcotics.
That could be scary.
That's a big disclaimer.
This came before the board twice, in closed session, prior to this, and there was a majority vote at both times. And both times, senior members of this board told us that it wouldn't be a good idea to take that out and make that motion, that the district doesn't need to hear that. So, I find it very troubling that it's here now. I feel we were misled terribly. I got two calls regarding this, regarding the superintendent last week. One was from a neighbor, parent, and alderman, Carl Kastner. And he said, "Quinn, I understand you have something on the agenda on Wednesday that regarding the superintendent." I said, "Well, we don't have a meeting on Wednesday, it's Monday." He said, "Oh, I understand you're trying to nudge him out." And I said, "Well, what I can tell you is that he got a raise for the 2013-2014 year, and he has a contract all the way through June 30th of 2015." And he said, "What the hell is he calling me for?" And we talked about something else, and that was it. I got a call from a parent that said, "Quinn, I was at the sixth grade concert this past week, and Dr. Holtz walked in, talked to the principal, and walked out, and stood behind the door on the outside, looking in." And one of the parents had asked her, "Is that our superintendent, or who is that?" And she says, "I believe it's our superintendent." And she said, "Well, isn't it strange that he didn't introduce himself, Frank?" And she said to me, "Quinn, we are invested in our children, we want him invested in our children, and it doesn't look to be that way." And one of our goals, one of Dr. Holtz's goals for last school year, was for him to meet, to go to the different schools, all four of them, and see what's going on there. And I think it was Eileen that made mention that throughout his whole response, there was never one vinaigrette, or incident, or Johnny said this, there was never one, never one comment about what was going on there. And while I agree that our test scores are going good, there seems to be peace here, we need Dr. Holtz to invest in our children, to go to all different schools, to go to the PTO meetings, not to talk, but to listen, to see what's going on at those different places. Go into the schools, go in and sit in the classroom, to not walk out, the parent told me by 7:06, he was gone, by not sitting in the stands, say, "Hi, hi, I'm Dr. Holtz. What can I help you with? Is there anything I can do? You know, what's going on?" You'll find, you'll find out what's going on a lot easier that way than when your administrators tell you that. We, as a board, graded him, and while I can't say what the grade was, I will say that you need to kick the door in, you need to go past, up and above, that's what we ask of our teachers, that's what we are asking of our children, to go up and above standard or average. We don't want that, we want above that, and that's what we need from you. It'll show, it'll show, but I don't think we're getting it right now. It's not a lot. You have a contract for a year and a half, or out, to June 30th of 2015. We have to make a decision, unless it's different tonight, but January of 2014, January 15, excuse me, to renew or non-renew. I say, "Let's give Dr. Holtz the time to do those, to do that, to show that he's invested in our children on the ground level." I, as a businessman, could not give a raise or extension to an employee that's not doing that. That's not good business, it's not. Not unless the market is so high for these people that you have to take what you've got. I don't believe that. I don't believe it's far off, but I believe there needs to be some work, and there needs to be some bait at the end of the fishing roll to get there, to do that. I think our children deserve it.
And I said, well, what I can tell you is that he got a raise for the 2013-2014 year, and he has a contract always through June 30th of 2015. And he said, what the hell is he calling me for? And we talked about something else, and that was it. I got a call from a parent that said, Quinn, I was at the sixth grade concert this past week, and Dr. Holtz walked in, talked to the principal, and walked out, and stood behind the door on the outside, looking in. And one of the parents had asked her, is that our superintendent? Or who is that? And she says, I believe it's our superintendent. And she said, well, isn't it strange that he didn't introduce himself, right? And she said to me, Quinn, we are invested in our children. We want him invested in our children. And it doesn't look to be that way. And one of our goals, and one of Dr. Holtz's goals for last school year, was for him to meet, to go to the different schools, all four of them, and see what's going on there. And I think it was Eileen that made mention that throughout his whole response, there was never one vinaigrette or incident, or Johnny said this, or there was never one, never one comment about what was going on there. And while I agree that our test scores are going good, there seems to be peace here, we need Dr. Holtz to invest in our children, to go to all different schools, to go to the PTO meetings, not to talk, but to listen, to see what's going on at those different places. Go into the schools, go in and sit in the classroom, to not walk out, the parent told me by 7:06 he was gone, by not sitting in the stands, say hi, hi, I'm Dr. Holtz. What can I help you with? Is there anything I can do? You know, what's going on? You'll find out what's going on a lot easier that way than when administrators tell you We, as a board, graded him. And while I can't say what the grade was, I will say that you need to kick the door in, you need to go past, up and above. That's what we ask of our teachers, that's what we are asking of our children, to go up and above standard or average. We don't want that, we want above that. And that's what we need from you. It'll show, it'll show. But I don't think we're getting it right now. It's not a lot. You have a contract for a year and a half or out to June 30th of 2015. We have to make a decision, unless it's different tonight, but in January of 2014, January 15, excuse me, to renew or non-renew. I say, let's give Dr. Holtz the time to do those, to do that, to show that he's invested in our children on the ground level. I, as a businessman, could not give a raise or extension to employee that's not doing that. That's not good business. It's not. Not unless the market is so high for these people that you have to take what you've got. And I don't believe that. I don't believe it's far off, but I believe there needs to be some work, and there needs to be some bait at the end of the fishing role to get there, to do that. I think our children deserve it. I think we deserve it, and I think, no matter which way, it has to happen. And I would be against this motion.
Jay, has a comment? Go ahead, Luanne.
I'll just say that we, as a board and a leadership team, I'm glad there's been peace lately. That's important to our district. It's important to the community as well. They want us to be, not that we always agree on things, but that we try to work collaboratively on the direction this district's going in. And although I'm, I mean, I'm a fairly new board member, the evidence is pretty clear that the district's doing really well. And our kids are doing great, as that gentleman there said about his son. You know, the teachers I see in this room, and the principals and administrators, you're all working really hard to make this district what it is. And I'm proud to serve. I have a laundry list too about Dr. Holtz, you know, all the things, there's things that I don't, I mean, there's things I'd do different, don't we all kind of feel that way? But I can't help, I mean, I agree with Quinn. We need to make sure and work more carefully, I think, as a team around the goals and make sure that we keep going in this direction. That's all I want to say. I'm willing, I think this team is working well, and I want to support that and help it move forward. I also want to listen to my colleagues, because I respect every one of you. You all bring a great perspective to this board, and I hope we can come together around the goals that we've been working hard and make sure that we work better together in the future, because our kids deserve it, so.
Thank you, Luanne. Go ahead.
Well, I have to agree with a lot of the things that Bob said about our previous superintendent, and there was always a lot of turmoil in the district while she was here. And things have changed so much with Dr. Holtz being here. You know, one of the things that we told him that we wanted him to do when he first came is to engage the community. We had no presence in the community as a district, and he has done a great job of that. He's done a great job of putting together a wonderful administrative team, and they are working very well together. You know, to use a sports analogy, you don't fire the coach when the team is doing, when the team is winning. And that's what I feel that we would be doing if we did not renew his contract.
Thank you, Nancy.
I will speak on a few points of clarification. One, in executive session, we don't take any votes. We take a roll, we have consensus. I wasn't at the last executive session, so I don't know how that was. But with that being said, the goal of our superintendent, and that's the only employee that we at this board are responsible for, is to, the goal and responsibility of the superintendent is to build a team and to build a feeling within the district, a sense of community pride, community purpose. They're judged unfairly and fairly on test scores. Test scores aren't always indicative of how the entire district is performing, but that's the measure by which the community looks at. Our test scores have been going up. I know that our administrative team, and I've been a huge advocate of all of our teachers, they're working closer and harder and together more than they ever have in all the years that I have been on this board. That sense of direction doesn't come from the bottom up. That sense of direction comes from the top down. And Dr. Holtz has done that. Nancy, you alluded to what certain expectations we had when we first started this process. You and I were on this board when we hired this superintendent. Some of these board members have not been on this board. And I was on this board in the previous superintendent, and I will not knock the previous superintendent because it's history. But from where we are, from where we came from to where we are, has been light years. And we are moving in such a direction, it's so positive in every aspect. When we sit and we talk to teachers in negotiations, and we talk to teachers just collaboratively in how they feel, the sense and the direction is so positive for them that they've embraced, and I'll use Tony as an example, as professional learning communities and everything that he's strived for, and are embracing it, and they're looking at it. That came from Dr. Holtz through the choosing of his administrative team. When I first started on this board, I was not a big, huge fan of the top-down approach because all I saw is what we had. And I was like, there's got to be a better way to make this happen. And as a parent of two kids that have excelled through this district and have become amazing individuals in their own rights because of their education here, I've always said I want every kid to have the opportunity, as like you said, you happen to be sitting in front of a child behind you that has the same and has had the same aspirations, and I have another child that's the same gifted and talented as yours. Dr. Holtz brings that to this table. He understands that there are so many dimensions to every child, and he sees all of them. Now, is he Superman? Good God, no. He cannot be in every school at every minute, every time. But he has a team, and he's put a team together that sees that. And every principle we have, Dr. Holtz has asked this board to extend their contracts to 2016 because he truly believes in their ability. We, as a board, should adhere to that also, say, you know what, if you're willing to stick, give them the extensions, we should be willing to give you that same extension and move this district to the level by which every one of us knows that we can be. Is anybody perfect? No. Nobody in this room is perfect. But good God, we can do it if we do it collaboratively between the seven of us and come up with the goals and the direction and give this man the opportunity to shine as he has shown already. So that's why I put this motion forward.
Thank you, TJ. Any other comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I believe in this district. I have believed in this district for many years, even as I was a student and grateful for every opportunity I was given, which is part of the reason why I hold this seat even today. But what I will say to the community is this, please trust us with whatever decision we make, even if it doesn't agree with what you necessarily believe in. I ask you to trust the board. And to the board members, I will say this, regardless of the outcome, I will support whatever decision the board makes.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anyone else?
I might as well make a comment. You know, I've thought very long and hard about this. I've listened to comments from all sides, and, you know, it's, you know, there's some pluses and minuses, but, you know, what it comes down to is I really don't want this to be a year or two years about what's going on with the superintendent. What I want to do is focus on moving forward with our goals and working together for our children. And I'm willing to do that with the current superintendent.
Okay, thank you, Eileen. Okay, then in that case, I'm going to call for the vote, and I'd like this to be a, if you would, Kathy, a vote per member of the board?
Okay.
Okay? So, Luanne?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
TJ?
Aye.
I'm an aye?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so vote passes, 5-2, motion passes, 5-2, contract extended through June 30th of 2016.
Move to adjourn.
Second. A motion to adjourn, and a second, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. We are adjourned from the school board committee, the whole, so we invite anyone to stay for the regular business meeting. If there are comments from the audience, that will be for future consideration, so just keep that in mind, but you're more welcome to stay. I will tell you, the roads aren't getting any better. Take that for what it's worth, now. So, we will, we can take...
Quinn, okay?
You know, Quinn, you want to take a break, or...
I wasn't planning on staying.
Okay, okay. All right, well, let's give Quinn a little time to get to his car and wish you well in your recovery. I have gone through that twice, I can empathize with you. And my only advice to you is make sure you do your exercises, as difficult as that is. Verify meeting notice and adopt the agenda. I don't think we need to do the, we don't need to do the pledge to the flag, although I probably should do it solo since I was late.
I was late, too.
Oh, were you?
Yes.
Well, no, misery loves company.
But it's not on the agenda.
No better, okay.
We have a duet.
You have a duet? Should we, are we required to do that? Well...
No. No.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. All right. Any comments from the audience for items for future consideration? Please step up to the microphone. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. We have approval of the November 25th school board meeting minutes, approval of December vouchers and vouchers payable, approval of the WAFT agreement, and then a 3D approval of line of credit. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda? I would see. Okay, C. I need to pull D.
T, A.
Anybody else?
I'll move, we adopt the consent agenda, A and B.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve 3A and 3B. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor of approving 3A and 3B, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried 6-0. 3C, approval of the WAFT agreement, easy for me to say, please, TJ, you wanted to...
I did, I pulled it, I got my answer already. I like to make a motion to approve of the WAFT agreement as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor of 3C, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay. I pulled 3D only because I need to abstain from that vote, given that the agreement is with the bank I'm associated with, so...
A motion to approve the line of credit?
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And one abstention. Thank you. Since I know there's an attorney in the audience, he probably... Anyways, comments from the school board regarding items for future consideration? I did make note, Eileen mentioned it earlier, and I think it's a good suggestion. I, visual person, love to see kind of what are the things that have been produced by our tech ed program, both at the middle school and high school. So if you make note of that, I will, and make sure that we start recording that on a more timely basis. Anybody else have anything they want to tee up?
I would like on the January, next our January meeting, to put out, we need as a board to decide whether we're going to support the WASB resolutions that will be presented at convention. And we'll make sure that we get a copy of those resolutions in the board package.
Kathy, you'll make note of that for the agenda for the first meeting in January? Thank you. Okay.
Yes.
I'll borrow the packet back from you, so I can...
Okay. Anything else for items for future consideration?
If we could put either for January or February, the review of the TBIS program, both at the middle school and at Hills Corners Elementary, and see how that's progressing and what their plans are for the next year.
The which ones?
TBIS.
TBIS.
At H-C-E-N at the middle school.
And the middle school.
Thank you.
Positive behavior.
Yeah, okay, all right. I'm hearing seven things. I just want to make sure I understood what you're asking for. Okay, anybody else have anything else?
We did want to, according to one of our goals, I think it was goal number four, we wanted to kind of monitor the one-on-one and get technology program at the middle school and get some feedback on that.
Sure. See how the first semester went? 101 initiative, okay. Okay, what else? Anybody?
Future consideration, no.
Okay, if not, item five, any board member announcements?
I have a clarification if I can. Kathy, you have a packet there that you said I have to have?
No, I was talking to Eileen.
Okay. And then declaration of non-candidacy is when?
December 27.
December 27th, and what are the ramifications of...
If the non-candidacy paperwork is not filed by the 27th, and you do not choose to file candidacy paperwork by the 7th of January, that extends the date for other candidates to January 27th.
Do we have any candidates declared? Could you do me a favor? Can you email, is this something? Because I know I'm per... Can you email, is this something, uh, because I know I'm personally the one looking for the declaration of candidacy letters. You have those for me tonight? Okay. Um, then my, the other thing is, it's board announcements, right? No discussion?
Mm-hmm.
I would like to wish everybody in our community, everybody at this board, a very Merry Christmas, a very Happy New Year, a blessed holiday. This is the time that we reflect back in the year past, reflect on our friendships, our faith and our religion going forward, everything we've gained and we've lost over the last year. It is a, sometimes a very happy, joyous times, it also is a very depressing times for all the people in the community. Let's remember each other, let's put our differences aside, let's remember why we're here, what we're here for, and be blessed that we are here every given day. Okay? Thank you.
Pretty tough to follow that announcement, I guess, but go right ahead.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make it, I'm gonna make it happier. Um, I just wanted to reflect on, um, the great, um, holiday givings that have been going on in our community with the AP students and their collection, um, for the 16th Street Community Health Center, for the Hills Corners Elementary and their toy drive. I think I read Edgerton was going and, um, singing at a nursing home. And, um, a lot of that was, was, um, um, there was a lot of communication on that with our new communication director. So, um, I think we really had a, a lot of holiday spirit going around, positive, positive holiday spirit going around with our students at, at the schools.
Good.
And I'm proud of that.
Good, thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, a thank you to Mr. Noak at the high school, the band director, and for Ms. Leroy, the band director at the middle school. They put on a concert last week that was well-attended by both high school and middle school parents, and it was really a fine example of that music program. And it was a very pleasant evening, and enjoyed very much.
Can I take another one? I too want to thank them. I was able to make that concert and walked away with a lot of grapefruit. You know, you try to give back, so I want to thank the parent groups that give those prizes, and all the work that they do to support the program as well, but it is, it was fabulous year. Son did a great job.
And of course, um, Luanne wants to thank everybody who gave prizes since she won two of them.
Yeah, exactly.
In a row.
Lots of grapefruit. How does that happen?
And, and because Mike's here...
You gotta add one more thing.
And because Mike's here, I want to thank him for his community involvement in hosting the teen, well, it was really family slash teen, a lot of the middle schooler, Packer watching party at the Hills Corners Pool House, and celebrating the opening of the ice rink. And Cindy was there to help, and I was there, and, and it was fun, and it was loud, and the Packers won, so.
And Gilbert Brown was there.
And Gilbert Brown was there, and he did, he did pass along a nice anti-bullying message to the students that were there, and that was, that ties in very well with a lot of the things that we, with the PDIS program at the middle school.
Couldn't have had a more exciting game either.
Oh, we could, as soon as he started talking, that's when it turned around.
Okay. I have one more board announcement that I have to go. It is the holiday. Um, I know I, I am, and Mr. Shaw are going to be going over to Finn Maguire's, um, and I will invite each and every one of you to join us for a, uh, holiday drink. Um, I will, Bernie and I will buy the first one.
You say only one?
Okay. Only one.
And Luanne is buying the rest. Okay, so you're welcome to stay until 3:00 AM.
You gotta be present.
We have a vendor in the audience that I think has an expense report.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Yes, 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 we do, but, yes, we do.
Vendors are welcome. Vendors are welcome. Our tech people are welcome.
I just wanted, you guys are welcome. It's, it is again, Christmas, it's time to put differences aside, and you're welcome to join us. We are going to step for one.
Drive safe.
All right, uh, the last, anybody else before I close this out? Um, it, it's been great, uh, we've had an interesting year, uh, we have challenges as we start the new year, and I think we'll be up for it. So, January 13th, you know, enjoy the holidays, but be ready to go to work on January 13th, including closed sessions, so that's the only comment I have. Okay? Thanks, everyone. I need a motion to adjourn. Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not bad, not bad.